Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Asheville Ski Club. This is our second Tuesday in March. Welcome, everybody. Glad everyone's here. It's always good to see folks. I'm looking at who we've got here. We've got myself, Mr. Baker, Lynn Nichols, Peter, Sonny, Jan, Margaret, and Greg is here. So and get a safe secretary report. Peter, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'll read the minutes from the last meeting back in February. We discussed the change to the bylaws that will set a new due date for membership dues to June 1st. And the board felt that this change would be beneficial to the club to in respect to the money flow and also to align better with the timing of payments due for winter trip signups. Tom Bouchard mentioned that he would make sure any mention of the due day payments in the news would be stated properly. Greg Casper's informed us about refunds from the Telluride trip that would have taken place in January 2021. He also gave us a quick summary of what the modified and scaled down Telluride trip that actually took place was like. Jan gave us a quick description of a club trip for skiing to Maribor, France. She stated that there's more information regarding the ski trip and a possible extension to Normandy and Paris in the e-news and also on the club website. We had a brief discussion amongst members about transportation in and around France at that time. Wayne discussed, had a discussion regarding ski trips for the 2122 ski season. He mentioned that, I believe, we were looking for a representative to go to the Mountain Travel Symposium to meet with trip vendors to begin scoping out future ski trips for the club. And then he mentioned the current lineup of the Crescent Council ski trips that have been announced for the next ski season. The early trip to Steamboat Springs in early December, a trip in mid-January to Sun Valley. And I don't know if there were any others. I didn't have them written down. Wayne also mentioned that club members had expressed in one of the surveys that they would have interest in going to Aspen Snowmass to Heavenly, to Park City Canyons, and possibly having a stay, a winter stay in the Zermatt Resort Resort and Spa setting. And after that, Wayne concluded the meeting.
All right, any questions? I have a motion to accept the minutes. Several had Lynn second.
My second.
Second by Jim. Any questions, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Guys, got it. Thank you, Peter.
That's all right.
Treasure. Let me just, let's just make sure we, we've got those tasks covered and I've got them done on a piece of paper talk under old business. One was the bylaws and that was approved to be able to move to June 1st under due dates. Let's see, Jan, I'll bring up France and trips. Also, Zermatt was mentioned in number nine, and we are going to Zermatt, except we're going to do that in July and we'll get Jan to be able to talk a little bit more about that. But I think that's all of the task. Peter, was there anything else that we should be discussing or acting on?
No, no, that, that was.
All right. Let's go into a treasurer's report. Kay cannot be here tonight. She is on the road, but she give me a report for March. And that is the square account, $3,188.2 and our checking account, $12,707.80, and our CD, $23,186.77. And our total assets, total cash, $39,082.59. And that also reflects a deposit that we sent to Snow Tours for $12,000 for a French trip. So that is Kay's report. Any questions about the financial report? If not, can I have a motion that we approve our finance report?
I do have one question. I'm sorry. Have we not paid holidays for the Zermatt trip yet?
Have we got a contract?
The contract was sent a week ago Monday.
That's right. I sent it to the board and have not heard anything back to the board. So that's an assumption that's been proved. I have not sent a check, but I'll go ahead and do that. I'll write it out tonight and get it in the mailbox tomorrow. How much was it? Do you remember?
Oh, let me check. I got the contract. Wasn't very much. I think it was like $500. I don't, I didn't make a copy of the contract yet. I think it was 500.
Okay, I'll make myself a note here and I was out of town working weeks, but I will, I'll get that check written and out to them. But talk about Zermatt, Wayne, you've got that. Is that the board approved Zermatt? But it's also, it's a summer trip, so. Do we get a motion in a second on the treasurer's report? Motion, can I get a motion? Do we get that, Peter?
I'll, I'll give us a motion to have the report.
Yeah, motion is to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye. Yes, nay, as I've got it. So the task is, out of that treasure report is to get that $500 to, to holidays. And so I've got myself a note to be able to take care of that.
Check, check that to make sure that that's the amount and that it's not $500 per person.
Okay, I don't think it is, but I will, I will definitely check it before I send it out.
Okay.
And, but we have a contract. I can't remember. We've got a contract, need to sign that and send it back in with the deposit, right?
Right.
Okay, with contract. All right, so since we've got the treasurer's report and we've got secretary's report, let's go ahead and go into trips report. Jan, go ahead.
Well, I guess I'll talk about the summer in Zermatt first. This is one that, that apparently they had put it together a year ago for the idea that it would be for this year, but this year, nothing, or this past year, nothing happened. So they kept the price at the same rate that it was last year. And it was a good price. The Zermatt Resort and Spa is beautiful. It, if you Google it online, Zermatt Resort and Spa in Utah, you'll see all sorts of gorgeous pictures of it. And they've put together a great plan for us. It includes a crater tour, a train ride, several parks, one of them back to a waterfall's wine tasting, museum, a day at Sundance, whitewater rafting, all sorts of things. And the price is only $10.75 per person. That includes all tips and gratuities and local taxes and resort fees and portage at the hotel. So I have put together a flyer to go out that I will be putting around tomorrow. And I put it in the newsletter. And I'm also going to send out the itinerary to people because it's such a really good itinerary that looks like a lot of fun. When I first put this out to people to see what the interest was like, I have 18 people already who are ready to sign up for it. So that's a good start. I figure I had only booked for 24. So, but you can put more than one person, I mean, more than two people in a room. A third person in the room, which could be a child or an adult even on a rollaway bed. And that only costs the 500 and something. So if you have three people in a room. It just looked like a lot of fun. It includes the welcome reception and the first dinner, the first night just and breakfast daily. So it's just an awesome, awesome deal. And I figure it will probably sell out quickly, but it has to. We don't have a lot of time on this since the the trip is in July and already it's March.
So if you're interested, get your name to, to Jan if you're interested in going. And like I say, it's in the newsletter. It's being advertised. And a good time to scope out this location to see if we want to go back there in the wintertime.
Yeah, well, in, in the winter now, you're about 15 to 20 minutes away from the slopes. That's, that's the downside. You're not close to slopes. You have to take a shot.
Feel like going to Jackson Hole and staying in town?
Yeah, yeah. It's shorter ride than that. It's farther than town. It, it's pretty far. It, it's great for the, the summer type trip. It's great. I'm not so sure I would want it for a ski trip.
No one complains about it in the winter of the groups that have been. They say it's not an issue. It's a short shuttle ride, et cetera.
That's what I say, scope it out.
Yeah, it gives you a good chat. Anyway, it's great. It's a great trip for non-skiers or people who want something in the summertime. Or for people who just want to relax in a spa, you know, that the resort is beautiful. It's got a lot going for it. So that's, that's why I thought that would be a good trip for people.
One of the nice things about that is also, you know, getting into Salt Lake City is easy and boy, it's not a long ride to get there. To your destination, it is like, what, less than an hour probably. There may be an hour depending on the weather, but it's close. So it's very, very convenient.
So that's, that's that trip. The other one that I have is Maribor, France. That's the largest ski area in the world. It it's beautiful. I haven't been there for a long time. Margaret knows exactly how long it's been since, since we were there. But it, it is the largest ski area in the world. You ski from village to village. It's really phenomenal. And we're staying, the lodging that we have is ski in, ski out. It comes with all the ground transfers everywhere and it's, it's breakfast and dinner are included daily. The skiing portion is 500 and $1,580. That's if you just want to go for one week. We will have it, it will be set up. We're working on airfare right now, trying to, to juggle the air so that everybody can go. And then there is an optional extension for $545. And that goes down to you'll fly from Geneva to Paris and from Paris, we'll take a coach to Mont Saint Michel, which is the most charming little island I think I have ever seen. It's just adorable. And it's got all kinds of neat French things on it, including a, a cathedral that was built in the 11th century. So it's really ancient, but it's, it is cool. Then we'll, we'll also see the D-Day museums where see Normandy and the beaches of Omaha. And the museums there, I've got a video for people to look at to get some idea of what it's about. Then we'll go back to Paris and we'll spend two nights in Paris, one full day and an evening and the night, one full day, and then we'll go home the following day. So that is, that trip, it won't be ready for signups until we get the airfare. And that, like I said, we're working on it. We should have that together by Friday or Saturday. When I put it out to people, the interest was very high. I have I asked for 42 spots because I figured this would be high. And I've got at least 32 people that are very interested in it and ready to sign up. So that still gives me space. Hey, Jan, can I ask you a question? So I guess I was there longer ago than you all. I was there in the eighties with my first husband. It is phenomenal. And I thought, I can barely remember it. So I thought I would take my second husband. But Nick doesn't ski anymore. So he comes along and just hangs with me and you know. There will be other non-skiers. Yeah, okay. Is the 1580 price for the first week, including the skiing and all that, or is there a little bit off for that if somebody's not skiing? It does not include lift tickets. Lift tickets, lift tickets for that area are $60 per, $60 for one, a one day ticket for an adult. There are discounts for seniors, there are discounts for multiple days, there are discounts for, for children. So there are a lot of discounts. So you know, the lift prices in Europe are very cheap. When you compare them to the United States, it's just mind boggling. That's why we we include the meals there. Okay. Always included, but lift tickets are not because, you know, a lot of people want a tour. They just want to see the area. And I have non, non-skiing spouses that go. Okay, we're staying at the what's it called? Let it, let it to. It's the ski in, ski out resort, but it's right in the heart of Maribor. Pardon me?
That's the same one we stayed at.
Really is it?
I think it's L apostrophe E T something, spell it out.
E T E R L O U. E T E R L O U.
Check, but I think that's it.
It has a spa now. So.
Well, I'll tell you what I remember about that trip was, you know, you would, you'd ski and you'd ride all these lifts and furnitures and various things. And then you know, in the morning and then you would like ski down, down, all just down, down, down to some village and have lunch and have wine. And then get some more shuttles and then spend the whole rest of the time skiing back to the resort. It was like, it was something like I've never done before. It's awesome.
I know. That's what I love about Europe. You can ski for you can ski for 45 minutes and never have to get on a lift. You know, just ski and ski and ski. We enjoyed it before, but I think we must have gone at a warm time. Do you remember when we went before, Margaret?
It was in January.
I went in January. It was in January again.
I, I can tell you in about two minutes.
Okay, so Jan, Jan, how do I let you know that we want to be on the list? Send me an email. An email, okay. And can you just give me your email real quick here while you're on there? It's really easy. Jan Van Dyne at gmail.com. Okay, V I N D Y N E, D I N E. Okay, thanks.
Original.
It's in the newsletter. Okay. Nobody reads the newsletter and I'll tell you.
I do.
Tom Bouchard puts out the best newsletter. It's really awesome. And I'm, I'm astounded that people who don't read it, but it's so good.
Does a great job.
I know, I know. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
I need to ask you a question. Are you handling the memberships on this? Are you collecting it? Or you said having them do it the way it normally is done to me or to the post office of the club?
I have, I will be asking them, like I did with the Zermatt trip. I have said, I told them to include their membership on a separate check.
Right.
I said, send it all to me and I will see to it that everything gets to the right people.
All right, that sounds good.
Because it gets really confused.
I think I read it wrong. It sounded like you said you were going to collect it all at once. And I'm saying oh, so you're going to separate it yourself.
No, I, I told them, I, I have sent off on the Zermatt trip. I have not sent anything out on Maribor. On the Zermatt trip, I sent them the contract to sign. And it's a $500 deposit. And then I said, I have sent them the form for joining the ski club. Send this in a separate check. Send it all to me and I will distribute it to the proper people.
Okay, good. Thank you.
That's the best way to do it, Jan, because you're the control person for all aspects of it and that will be, make a lot more sense.
Well, it got to be such a mess before because some of the things were going, some were being included in, in the deposit, people were including their, their dues in with the deposit and those go to two different places. Some of them were sending it to the, the post office box. I didn't know whether they had paid or not because I didn't have a copy of it.
Right.
People send it all to me. I make copies of everything. And when Jim didn't have it, I could say, okay, here's a copy of the check. And I could show it to him. So it works out better that way because I keep
Thank you.
Jan, the date was January the 7th to the 5th.
That's like, wasn't it? Well, this is, this is January 22nd through the 29th with the four days bringing it up to February 2nd.
What year was the first trip?
I have room for a single I have one single male who's very
Margaret, what was that year? What year? Oh, wow. 20 years or 21?
What was the price? Because I've got the prices on here. What is the price for it? Just the, not the extension.
Without air, it's 1580.
$100 difference. It was six, it's cheaper. It was 1660.
No kidding.
Wow.
The euro, actually, there was no euro at that time. That's true. Probably looking at francs and they were expensive.
Well, did that I'm not sure on the air.
That might, that might have included the air.
I don't have that. I saved stuff, but I didn't save that.
And air is, right now, it's really bizarre. We tried to do air to Salt Lake City and group air was out of sight. So I told people they were better off to book their own air for the Utah trip. That it's the group air was coming in from Asheville to Salt Lake City for $893 per person. I said, you can, you can drive out cheaper.
Yeah.
So but like I said, I've got, I've got room for 42 people. I do have two people who have all, have always traveled with me in the past and have moved to Australia. The Stratons, they contacted me and they said, we want to go on that trip, but we're not allowed out of Australia right now. They Yeah, so I said, I can't hold you a spot, Tony. I don't hold spots for anybody, but we'll see what we can do. We'll, we'll see what we can do.
That's for France, right?
Pardon me? Yes, that's for France. Yeah. Well, it sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you on the Jan for trips. Anything else? We don't have anything solid on any other. I've asked for a snow mask numbers and also for Heavenly again. So still waiting on Sarah to be able to send those. So I don't have anything else to report at this time. All right, so trips, membership, Jim Beck?
Yes.
Give us an idea of what's going on with the membership. What's our numbers look like?
You want numbers? We got to get on this since COVID.
Yeah. But, but what is our, what is our membership as of a month ago, two months ago, three months ago, when you last figured out? What, what is our numbers looking like?
Well, back, the last time I added everything up and checked, when it was 114 members. That was of January 11th.
Okay, 21. That's good.
But I, I wasn't prepared to give you anything on that.
Okay, so 114 as of January. That's cool. I was thinking more like 50. So it's double what I was thinking.
Yeah, pretty slow.
Well, it's probably half what we had a year ago. But you know what? It's okay. We're, we're going to build it back up and with the help of Jan and others running trips, people get back interested in come and pay their dues. And so that's what it's all about, providing opportunities for families to be able to connect together, do some family time and connect with other skiers. So that's what
Question, Wayne?
Yes.
On, has the board thought about maybe, say, these people that have renewed this year, well, 114 or whatever, give them free membership for next year? And then since we're starting June 1st, taking dues again, that would kind of, you'd just be dealing with the dues. The new ones coming in, several clubs are giving their members a free year since they haven't had any meetings, haven't had any expenses, so to speak of, for anything. Raleigh is doing it. They're the latest ones that I've heard. They're offering free memberships, not going to charge. There are a few other clubs that are doing that.
Okay, you know, it's not been brought up to the board and they have not, they've not discussed it, but you know, we are, you know, that conduit to the board. If the board wants to do something like that, by all means, discussion. Anybody else having a discussion? Jan, you're on the board.
Board for those that paid this year, the 114 that renewed their, you know, it's kind of like
Our, our dues is not expensive and the, the thing that worries me about that is if I am going to be collecting membership money for new people, I don't want to have to try to figure out who's paid and when they paid and, and whatever. It's easier for me to just ask everybody to pay for their dues. Everybody pay their dues and I can turn it in. Otherwise
Know who's paid now. So those, yeah, screen those out and it would be anybody that's not on the list now. That would have to send you dues, so.
So what's the dues at the other clubs that are giving a free year?
Um, ours are actually on the high side. A lot of clubs are only 25 for a single membership, 30 for a family. Raleigh's is I'd have to double check on Raleigh's. They were kind of about what we were price wise. Huntsville has a tiered system. If you live more than 50 miles away, you only pay a $15 membership. And then if you live in Huntsville, you, you pay a full membership. Because a lot of Asheville people joined Huntsville a few years back because they only had to pay $15 versus 35 or 60.
I just don't understand that. I mean, you can afford all these trips, but not pay $35.
Well, I don't either, but there are people that do that.
Well, the, the people are getting some advantages. They, even though we didn't run any trips or have any meetings, they didn't still have racing. They're still
But they've paid those dues. They have to pay race dues. That's separate too. That racers have to pay a $35 race fee to Crescent.
Well, that have paid would do it just for the club, knowing that COVID was a problem here, that we weren't going to be doing anything.
Would Crescent stop charging the clubs for the, I mean, we didn't get anything out of it of being a crescent. Did they stop charging the clubs? We have to still pay.
Membership fee to Crescent?
Yeah.
We still have to pay because they still have the trips and
but they didn't.
Except for that one, yeah.
Yeah, I think we paid dues.
Thing, if we're having to pay the council for the membership that we have, and we do have to pay them based on how many members we have. And they're not letting us get by, even though they didn't provide anything for us. Why would we?
I agree.
Why would we be able to afford to not charge anybody?
Crescent, because a lot of people went on Charlotte. Through Crescent, because a lot of people went on Charlotte's trip. Charlotte's ran five trips. And if you remember the Crescent Club, you paid a dollar to be able to go on their trips.
Right, so.
It was just a thought, something. Because we give so little to the members and, uh, you know, we're a pretty big club compared to some of them that are giving, you know, free membership.
Haven't there been people already paid their membership dues this year, though?
Right, but we're gonna have to pay again starting June first. That's gonna be the new year.
So that's when you're suggesting that we may not collect dues during?
Already paid.
Well, what I've done is told the people on the Zermatt trip that if they are all, have that, that. If they have paid for the year. Then they don't need to pay to join, to go on the Zermatt trip.
And the membership ends.
Membership is June.
Right, but they joined back in the fall with the idea in mind that it was for one year. We changed things before that year ended. So they ought to be grandfathered in and let that be good. Now, if they want to go on any ski trips. That will definitely go into the next year. I think Pete was the one who gave me that idea. He said, what about the people already? Who already paid? Well, for, for the Zermatt trip, they're paid for the year. And I don't think we should charge them again.
They have to eventually pay anyway. They'll be paying.
Right.
Probably by July or August for the rest of the. Next ski season, so they'll catch up.
I told them.
Probably be conscientious enough to pay it if they've already paid for this kind of a washout year. And I agree with Jim that a lot of people who did pay the, uh, club dues this year did it. On a kind of a, a personal reason, just to support the club.
That's.
So I, I don't really wanna do, deal with the, let's offer a possible free. Um, a freebie to these people. I think they did it for good intentions and I think it could just sort of mess it up with other people. And also you're promising something that could sort of come back on you in future years.
I, I have a question. I didn't pay a lot of attention to, to me, it was such a nominal charge, I guess, but I just paid it and. Um, so the amount that we paid, was it in like the fall? When was it? So, um, is it prorated at, at anything when you repay in June or was it the full year and then it's? You just start again.
Start again.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, uh, just listening to your all's conversation with all the pros and cons. That it's kind of a goodwill gesture for people who paid for sort of nothing for the past year. I mean, I don't see that administratively burdensome to know who did pay and waive them. Or give them a discount on the dues for the rest and then charge everybody else who hasn't paid or is joining new or whatever, the full freight. I mean, that might make people think, well, about the club. There've been a lot of concessions made because of COVID and.
Right.
Um, it, to me, it's, it's not a huge issue, but I could see that it might make some people feel good and it might be helpful to some people. But not a big deal either way.
Maybe we can pay those who complain. When they have to pay again in June, if they complain, they say, well, we didn't get anything for our dues last year. But, but that'd be a pain in the mind, corrected here in my paperwork.
And mine. For me.
Yeah.
The board has, you know, voted to, to make the change of June first, so, um. Uh, and, and I, and Jan, you're on the board. Jim, you're on the board. I mean, I don't mind taking this to the board. If somebody wants to, to make a motion that we go to the board with something, I'll be glad to do it. Uh, but they did just make the change to be able to bring it back to June first to try to align it back into trips to where you're not having the. And mid-cycle be able to pay dues when you're trying to promote trips. But, uh, I'm open to what, what the membership wants to do and I'll take whatever you want to the board. This needs to be, you know, voted on to be able to do and then we'll go forward with it.
Well, because of the trips and that, I, 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 I think we could take the hit from some people. I, I just let it go. The way we, we knew there was gonna be problems going to June to November. For those who already paid, I, I don't think they're gonna complain to, to tell you the truth, but who knows?
And I'm gonna pay my dues. I'm, I'm, you know, they're gonna be paid by June first, so, uh, it's, it's not a big deal.
I don't think so either, but if you wanna get a board meeting going, we can discuss it more. I don't know if we need to, but. I'm all for it if we have to. Get everybody on the board and pick, pick a place to go.
Sounds like it's a board issue and it needs to come up before the board and, um, we can discuss it. Along with the other board members who aren't here, but it doesn't need to be discussed further at this meeting.
It'll, it'll have to be a board meeting, but, but I'm gonna make sure that I understand is that. And, uh, of, of what the request is, and that way when we go to the board and we come back, it's clear what, what we're asking. So. Jim, and you guys are clear on what's being asked, so when we go to the board, you'll be able to explain and, uh, put it out to them.
Did the board?
I would just, I would just phrase it that you might consider if there is some accommodation that you would make. For those who did pay the dues, the full dues in the previous cycle and just discuss whether you want to make an accommodation. For those for just one, a one-time deal, you know, to be determined.
Okay.
I thought we had asked at one point too to, at, remember how we used to give a discount for people that paid their dues? Early before the one.
I've asked for them to do that for, for.
To the board, but I don't guess it ever made it to the board to go back to that. That was kind of an incentive for people. And it wasn't what, I ever turned up maybe five dollars? Oops.
That's me. Keep going.
Okay, I, I'd, I'd have to look in an old newsletter to see what it was, but we offered that for years. And, you know, people would pay their dues early because they wanted that, to give, get that discount, even though it was, you know, five dollars.
I, I have suggested that repeatedly and, and nobody has gone for it.
A short request to the board on that one. You're on.
I'm on the board. I'm on the board. I've suggested it before. And this is the second time I've been on the board.
I'd rather see that than the other one I talked about. Said everybody.
Me too. I agree. That renewals are cheaper than new members. Why am I seeing this?
Wayne's looking for.
Go to break it up.
Yeah. This is my, this is my, um, computer. I'm sharing my screen with you. So, um, let's see, um. I'm just trying to figure out what's in the dues.
I've got a paper copy of them. There it is.
Nothing in there about discounts. Just checking, just to make.
Not, it, you won't find it in there. All right, these are so outdated. You'd have to go to, I've got the archives of all the paper newsletters going back to the eighties.
This really is your life, isn't it?
Well, I inherited it when I was president. The president kept doing it and then one time the president didn't know he had them. Took us three years to find them and he had them all the time. So I said, I'll just keep them. And then since we've gone digital, I just keep digital copies.
And when I need something like, you know, who's up for election for board, Margaret says, it's this person right here. So, you know. I use her and abuse her on.
Yeah, you're not gonna find anything in the bylaws about it. It wasn't a bylaw.
Okay.
It's probably a policy procedure, which we don't have separate.
Right. Okay. I think we're clear on that. Uh, something that's come to us is that available to us is the Capital Club. Anybody know anything about the Capital Club?
On top, it used to be on top of BB and T, wasn't it?
I'm not sure.
Private dining club?
It is.
Private dining. Yeah, it was on top of the old BB and T building.
Old BB and T building, where was it?
Where Eris.
Radisson, maybe?
Where Eris is. Wasn't that the BB and T building? Advance.
It's right across from the Vance Monument.
Yeah, that used to be the BB and T. The Monstra.
So what, so what about the Capital Club?
We've been invited there. I'm trying to think, uh, Joe, what's Joe's last name? Uh, to be able to have our meetings there. And, uh, it's a ski club member. I don't know that he renewed last year, but, uh, his kids. Uh, have skied with us in the past. They've been members. What is his name? Capital? And, uh, it's, um, it's very swanky. Uh, you've got balconies overlooking downtown Asheville. Uh, so you've got large views and he's willing to be able to give it to us for free. Are, you know, and, uh, as long as, you know, we take care of bartenders, there's no fee. He said normally it's fifteen hundred dollars to rent out. And, uh, he's wanting to give it to us to be able to use, uh, and, um. He definitely wants to get back, you know, involved with the ski club. He said this year, this past year, things just didn't work out. What is his name? Joe, Joe.
It's awesome to me.
It sounds, it sounds like business has fallen off so much with corporate gatherings and other things, they're just trying to. Get some money to their staff and their bartenders and the, it's a fixed cost for them for the facility, so anything they makes on the bar.
Right, Joe Scott. You remember the guy named Joe Scott? Family owned snowshoe. He's here in Asheville.
His family owns snowshoe?
Used to, yep. And, uh, it's above the June Restaurant. Capital Club is above Red Junior.
Oh, wait, that's, um, over by, uh, uh, Pritchard Park.
Pritchard Park.
Yeah, Red Ginger is, um, a, a, a converted hotel. I guess to the west of Pritchard Park, but it's, it looks right onto Pritchard Park.
It's crossed from Tupelo, honey.
Oh, that used to be bank, didn't it?
Uh, the bank was actually right next door. Um, it's, it's now, I believe, a hotel. It was refurbished. It's a nice little restaurant too, by the way, Red Junior.
Yeah, we get food brought in from there. That'll work.
You get all these small dishes. It's almost like, um.
It's very good.
Yeah, they're very good. You can try a lot of little interesting, um, um, East Asian dishes there.
So Joe asked me to run it by the membership and, uh, again, it's free, no charge. Uh, to be able to do, he said he can give us free parking in the back. Uh, so no, no charge for parking when we're downtown. And he said that he doesn't offer food himself, but he said, you know, you can cater Red Junior, you know, any, any place in town we want our food. Uh, heck, twisted Laurel, you know, to be able to bring food in. He said he's, he's totally fine with that. Is that something you guys are interested in? Maybe, you know, new.
Free's good. You bet.
And the view.
It might be a draw too for people to try something new and feel like it's a little more upscale.
Well, and parking's probably right behind him in the.
Yeah, there, there's a giant parking lot right behind all those.
Really nice and close.
Alright, so this March he asked.
What are you guys talking about?
Say again?
The one in town, the center of Asheville? Richard.
Yeah, right by Pritchard Park. It's a little honey there.
I would take the crosswalk across and, uh, it's right there beside Red Junior up high. And, uh, there's balconies off the back of it with views.
Alright, sounds good to me. Yeah.
Hey, Sonny, we can dress up.
Get out of the sweatsuits.
Yeah. Vest and the flannel shirts.
I'll bring a disco ball.
They've got views of the, of, of the bus stop too, which is always a thrill.
Uh, go, you check it out, uh, Google it, you know, um, and at Capital Club. He asked me to make contact back with him in a couple of months after I had a chance to run it by the club. Which is, uh, gonna be March, April, May. I'll talk to him in May. Probably our first meeting there would be like a September.
No, I think we ought to have summer meeting at Highland Brewery. They've got everything set up outside. Just for fun. That, the last time we had one, we spent a lot of time talking about whitefish and it generated a lot of interest.
That's a good place.
It is a fun place. They, they've got everything, so it's socially distanced. People enjoy it. It'll, it's outside. I think that would be, uh.
There's a rooftop bar there. If you wanna go up the top.
Yeah, well, you can go if it rains. You can go under the, you know, in the open. Kind of like a garage.
Bring your dog. You can bring your dog.
You can bring your dogs, yes.
They had the food truck out there too. It was good.
Yeah, that, I think we ought to do that for the summer just to get people back into the swing of things, maybe an August meeting. Or something.
March, so, uh, what's your thoughts on the folks here? What are your thoughts about meeting face to face? Um, when, when do you think that's gonna be possible? Based on everybody's, um.
Getting shots?
No sooner than August.
By the end of May, everybody that wants a shot will have one.
Hopefully, yes, you bet.
Yeah. Pardon me?
Even the young ones. Us oldies all got our shots or close to us all.
Yeah.
But they'll probably still be masking and things like that, but it would be safer.
Yeah, it would be. Greg, you might even have a shot by then, huh? Yeah, right. Or I'll take some couple of shots at the bar.
Well, they did have things, they did have like circles set in, uh, with. The tables and things, but they had circles set up into the, in the grass where you would be in your circle. With people that, that, uh.
Yeah, right.
You were, you know, lived in your home or something. There were little, that's all over the place, so.
Your little pod.
It can be done.
Do you think it's gonna be possible to do that? I'm hearing August. I'm hearing June.
Well, if it's in June, that gives us a chance, if, if the Zermatt trip isn't sold out, that will give us a chance to. Present it, but I'm hoping it will be sold out in May.
Alright, I'm just looking now to see if the, the rooftop is open. Visit us, venues. So I'll check back with you guys, uh, for in May and just sort of see what the comfort level is in May for June, July or August.
Couldn't we have our first meeting outside at Highland or someplace like that in the summer?
Absolutely.
But that's your word, what we were talking about. Because it would be a lot better if there were an outdoor style meeting.
Yeah.
For the first meeting.
And then move to the inside venue later in the fall.
September, October, yeah.
They're not open on Tuesdays, it's Wednesday through Fridays from three to nine PM.
Well, then we could have it at the, uh. Park on the river. Where we had, we had picnics before.
Carrier park. Carrier park.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, I'm gonna put it on my note. Carrier Park, we'll bring it back up in when May to see.
Baxter says he wants to go. He wants to go to Highland Farm, to Highland Brewery.
We won't be able to go on Tuesday. We're okay with that.
Okay.
Meeting, it'll just be a, yeah, it would just be a.
Reacquainted meeting, I guess.
Yeah.
That's when you can break the news about the dues discount.
After a few beers.
Oh, wait, they, no, no, they had to already pay it by June, so.
Okay, I'll bring it back up in May and, uh, we'll talk about it and, uh, maybe it's something we meet, uh, we'll. Okay, I'll bring it back up in May and, uh, we'll talk about it. And, uh, maybe it's something we meet, uh, we'll make a decision June, July or August.
Look, if you're gonna do the discount, it should be the people who come to the Zoom meetings first, right?
Yeah.
Hey, uh, and every year I was hoping Bill Melton would be on here. I have him in charge of the nominee committee. I was hoping he would be on tonight, but I haven't seen him. Uh, he must be tied up with, uh, at work. Uh, but however, is that we have, uh, elections coming up this year. March is supposed to be the time to be able to start collecting, uh, names for the nominee, from the nominee committee for who wants to run as president, vice president, I guess secretary treasurer. And then we got a board member, I think it's Ken Porter Shirley's, um, is up for his board member. So, um.
But you got three on the board, don't you? They are coming off. Doug McMillan was supposed to come off in twenty twenty.
Uh, let me go back and look at it.
Who else comes off?
Do I come off?
Ken Porter Shirley was twenty twenty-one. Peggy Ayers was to come off in twenty twenty. It was my understanding that they all agreed to stay on because of COVID last year and that we'd make the changes this year. And then Jim and Jan are twenty twenty-two.
You're absolutely right. Yep, so we got three board members, uh,
Physician.
Be able to feel, uh, and the other officers. So what I would ask for you to do is that if you have nominations, uh, I don't feel comfortable in having them come to me, but if you got nominations, send those to Bill Melton. And, uh, he, I'm sure he's got, uh, uh, other committee members that he's got to work on. But, uh, I'm currently finishing up my third year. Our ballos say that we can only serve two-year terms at a time. And, uh, with COVID, uh, everybody thought it was the best thing to be able just to go ahead and continue serving. But, uh, you know, if we, if I'm, if I'm, uh, the president another year, we're definitely going against our ballos on what we should be doing as far as elections go and officers. So we definitely need to be looking. I know that, uh, Bill was talking to Tyler to see if Tyler was interested in it. So I'm not sure where that's gone or been. Uh, but, you know, getting some more folks involved as the, uh, as the officers. I do know Kay is interested in giving up treasure. So anybody that would like to be treasurer, I know that she's interested in, in passing that on. She's got a lot of stuff going on in her life with her kids. Some sickness going on. So I know that she wants to spend more time with them. And, uh, we've been very, uh, very accommodating with her. She can't make a report. You know, we've not pressed that, uh, but she did give us a report for tonight, which I'm much appreciated of. But, uh, if you've got some nominations, just go and do those. And our election will be in April and the officers will take effect June first.
Okay.
Uh, what else? Anything else? I've got eight oh nine. Anything else?
How'd you do that, Lynn?
So there's a chat function. There's a little thing that says chat and then there's a drop down box and you can chat with any one person or everyone.
Cool. Well, send me, send me an email so I'll have you.
I will.
Notify you.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta go twist my husband's arm. No, I think, um, I think we wanna do it. It sounds like a great trip. We'll probably fro- play on our own though.
Well, I can tell you that, um, uh, Merrill, Rob Merrill is not a skier. His, his wife Lee is. Rob is a retired dentist.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, he goes on my European trips too.
Exactly. It's a real romantic venue and I remember the food being good. I did get altitude sickness there, but that's cause I drank too much when I first got there.
Yeah, baby.
And it's not that high. It's, it's. I know, but honey, you don't know what I did on the plane on the way over.
Heard about that one.
That's what I love about Europe is that, that it's, it's a little low altitude, you know, it's no more than this in Asheville.
Bad liquor is bad liquor.
And then the smell of Roquelet in every meal with everybody smoking and all those ashes falling in their food and the French like eat and then they smoke and then they eat and then they smoke.
Yeah, I'm glad that part of the things have changed.
Yeah, right. But it sounds like a great trip anyway. No, I, I really wanna go. So, um, my birthday's, uh, to, what, tomorrow, Thursday? I'm gonna ask for it for my birthday, so.
Yeah.
Probably be emailing you.
Anything else for the good?
Alright.
Alright, I'm gonna stop the recording and, uh, if you guys wanna continue.